Thank you and welcome back. We have completed two work sessions on Wednesday, August 2, and we now turn to public comment. This time, the public comment is on agenda items only. So the agenda appears online, projected there before you. So you can verify if you wish what is in fact on the agenda. And we welcome comments from within the hearing room or online. Staff, do you see individuals who wish to speak?
Yes, Chair. John Lee, please go ahead.
The Council, John Lee, three-decade Clark County resident. I appreciate your deliberations today in the earlier discussions regarding the need for a third and a fourth bridge crossing. Thank you very much. Somebody needs to take a leadership role, and we are long past due in doing that. With regards to the new letter that just showed up on the agenda yesterday afternoon, this is appears to be contrary to the two times the Clark County Council has said that they have very specific concerns with regards to the current proposal. The reality is, the current proposal does nothing to reduce traffic congestion or save people time, and overwhelmingly, that is what they want. The current proposal is to spend between $5 and $7.5 billion. That is an outright boondoggle and waste of the people's money. Oregon and Washington are presently building a bridge over the Columbia River and Hood River for $520 million. Why would we spend 12 to 15 times that much to build a bridge here? Clark County citizens have said no to light rail. Light rail is their chosen preferred method of high-capacity transit. It will serve fewer people than C-Trans buses. Furthermore, transit ridership has fallen off a cliff. C-Trans is not even expecting transit ridership to return to pre-pandemic levels until the end of this decade. Finally, Trimed is demanding, as part of the IBR, that we, both states in the project, pay for 19 light rail vehicles for a three-mile extension of light rail. That's ridiculous. It's an outrageous request on their part. Finally, added into this boondoggle is they are also asking for an upgrade to their Gresham Light Rail Maintenance Facility. That has nothing to do with the bridge. This is a pork barrel project, just like the CRC is. We should reject it. Additionally, Clark County citizens have overwhelmingly said no to tolls. If you build a responsible project, you could do it for a billion dollars or less, and there would be no need for tolls. Tolls overwhelmingly punish Clark County citizens. We know that roughly 75,000 southwest Washington and Clark County-specific citizens commute to work in Oregon. They are being asked to pay an unfair burden when they're already paying Oregon income taxes. So please vote no on this letter. There are many, many more details that need to be dug in and exposed with regards to the IBR. Thank you so very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, John. Are there others who wish to testify?
Yes, Chair. Caller, please unmute yourself in. Go ahead.
Good morning. This is Kimberly Gohean Elbin, life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. I have no notes with me today as I'm out on the Columbia River fishing. I'll be speaking on the old minutes, excuse me, old business minutes of July 26. I've got a couple of things to say, though. This last week, there was no quorum called on all of your council meetings, including the Board of Health. I think that you were supposed to call quorum, but there were no quorums, and then the business was taken care of. And I have a real big problem. Why can't the Chair, Karen Barrowman, be in public and in-person meetings? There's always interruptions every time, you know, with listening and hearing her if she's not on or whatever. Anyway, on July 26, it was a more Clark County Board meeting with an open public comment. This is one of many meetings where citizens must look at the true facts about the COVID pandemic nightmare that are on the public record, and that this council, along with the unelected staff, must be transparent and make these truths accessible and transparent to citizens.
Chair, this is Kathleen. The minutes that the caller is discussing is not on today's agenda.
Thank you, Kathleen. Are there others who wish to testify?
So I will begin. I am.
Yes, Chair. Okay, we can come back to that one in a moment. And I have one more person over the phone. Please go ahead with your comment.
This is Robert Anderson. I wanted to get comment on this IBR letter and just want to echo John Lee's comments in also in regard to giving notice. Not sure how much notice could be given for it, but again, I'm always an advocate for the public having more time to kind of digest this, the information that comes to the council, so that we can weigh in, so that you can hear that. But regarding the IBR, I don't think that it takes, I think most of you, not all unfortunately, but most of you are aware of what, as John said, a boondoggle that it is, that the billions of dollars that are represented that want to be used and wasted, quite frankly. And I just encourage the council to, you know, look at it, look at it as if, a couple of factors. One, these are your actual dollars. Sometimes we lose sight of that. And then also, if you had to cross the bridge, if you had to pay these tolls, which many of you will not have to on a daily basis, but what the financial hardship that it's going to bring. And unfortunately, the businesses, it's quite a moneymaker for the consultants, for the groups that, you know, are supporting this, are really just in it to make money for themselves. And so I just ask that the county, look at this. There's better approaches. Obviously, the federal and state governments are trying to jam this down Clark County throat. And I appreciate those that are voting against this and will continue to stand against this kind of wasteful spending and really asking for a return to common sense approach. Clearly, there needs to be improvement. There needs to be where traffic is reduced. But what is being presented through state and federal channels is just an absolute waste. So thank you so much.
And one more, Chair. Kirk, please go ahead.
Thank you, Council. Sorry about the delay. The unmute button hid from me. So my name's Kirk Van Gelder, and today happens to be my 63rd birthday, and I'm a little disappointed to see that this I-5 Bridge Letter was just put up yesterday late afternoon. I didn't understand, didn't see it until even this morning. So I'm a little unprepared, but I would echo what John Lee said. He hit a lot of those key points that I don't need to respond to. So the same things. But I will say that this letter, I'm not sure what its purpose is. I see that there's a company organization name that could be put in. I don't know if that's meant for the council to do that and say that's Clark County, or if it's supposed to be other businesses and all. So there's a lot of confusion about even what that is. But where it says it's continuing to support the IBR program, that's a falsehood. The people have spoken on numerous occasions not supporting that in its present form, especially with the light rail component and being too low and the cost, all those kinds of things. And that it says that it is going to improve congestion. Again, that's also falsehood. So listening to the comments of the councilors, the majority of the councilors this morning, I'm totally in support of getting our heads wrapped around a third option. It's, does not make logical sense to be fixed, trying to fix one, replace one, when we only have one other reasonable option for crossing the river. Logic says we need an extra one to be able to use when we do need to replace that bridge down the road. Let's get that in place first, spend money there first, and then deal with the I-5 Bridge without light rail, dealing with what we need here in Clark County. So thank you, Council, for your interest and focus on that.
Thank you, Kirk. Are there others?
I believe that's everyone.
Okay, very good. So that concludes then our public comment on the agenda items. Let's go to old business. Is there a motion regarding the minutes for July 26?
I move approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Second, those in favor, discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed. Jail update. Amber, David Shook, take it away.
Good morning, Chair. This is Amber Emery, Deputy County Manager. This is a continuing conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago about the remodel and the facility updates that we are currently doing in the jail facility. So I will be handed over to Dave to talk through some of our updates, and then I'll come back with the stakeholder groups that we're discussing. So Dave, go ahead.
Good morning, Councilors. Director Shook, Jail Services Department. Last couple of weeks, Councilor Marshall wanted an update on some of the projects. And so when I first started in this position, one of the things I'd asked was for a comprehensive list of many of the major projects that are going on. So I listed the most impactful ones, as we've been talking for months now about bed space and staffing and issues. So anytime we talk about these remodel or projects, it's immediacy, it's security and safety. And again, we recognize that we're talking about remodel and improvements and things like that. And so these projects are already in the works. Some of them are coming to conclusions here real shortly and should help with some of our bed needs. The shower and plumbing updates, for example, you could understand with the hundreds of inmates, the volume of water that is being used in those living areas. So occasionally, you have to go in and regout and do those different things, but this is on the industrial level. Because of the material, because of the issues that happen, we have to actually empty out the dorms and conclude that work. I think we're down to the last two living areas out of 19 to finish with this shower project. At the same time, we're working on security upgrades. That started from COVID, but it really is about safety and security. So many of the security doors had spaces when this facility was built in 1984. And as you can imagine, oftentimes, different substances, food and other, come flying out of those spaces and security with weapons and other things. And so we've had assaults through the, you would be amazed at the small little slit that we have in the building that an arm or a hand could come flying out of. And so again, as we continue to try to secure our facility up and improve that, taking into account that there may be a remodel in the works. So these projects were already underway. They were already funded, and we should be coming to some conclusion about that. Just the ADA improvement one, again, ADA came around in 1990. This building was created in 1984, so we had some areas behind. Working with the DOJ, they've given us latitude to work on our remodel plans and to see how that comes into fruition before having any further conversations about that. But that was something that's kind of in our front side as far as making sure that our facility is approved for its all needs as folks come in. And then the other two areas, again, we used to serve a million meals a year. We're down to a little bit less than that because of the amount of inmates that we currently have, but freezers, walk-ins, things like that, just occasionally need to be repaired and replaced. And as well as expanding our jail industries area, we're doing more work and have more employees being stationed down there, and they don't have actual workspaces. The warehouse itself gets incredibly hot during the summer, and I know Pacific Northwest doesn't get very many hot days, but it's, it's sweltering for those employees that have to work out there. So we're creating some different workspaces to organize what's going on. So those are the larger existing facility issues that we're dealing with. Just a quick update on last week when we came to talk to you about Skamini County. We actually already have about 13 or 14 inmates that are identified to move over there to also lessen the impact of some of this stuff that's going on. So we're doing some final conversations with that county to make sure they're the right kinds of inmates, and so they'll be moving along. That will help with some of these remodeling and other aspects that we're currently working on. So any questions about what's going on currently that we're working on in this large facility across the street? Okay. And really, the bigger part of it is our RFP that's currently out. And I know there's some small writing on this, and I'll have some updated dates and times for what happens as we move forward. This started in March of this year with our facilities manager, Michelle Schuster, pushing out these RFPs and getting the responses. We had three organizations that responded to that. We went through an evaluation process, and a company was selected. We're still currently working through contract negotiations. And just an update on some of the dates there, I believe Michelle's trying to get on to council time with you all to discuss any updates in the next several weeks. So that's to be determined once staff reports and other documents are completed. So that's in the process. So hopefully sometime around mid-August to the end of August, we'll be on your time to come back and talk about what's going on with the RFP process. So there's, those are some little bit squishy dates, but we're looking forward to sometime in the next month, getting moving on the next parts of this. The next slide, if you look at, are really the scope of work for this RFP and our expectations or the suggestions from CFAC in 2019 and the efforts of the leadership team now to make sure that this facility and the conversations are encompassing in a comprehensive discussion. So I'm not going to necessarily speak about every point, but as you can look at the numbers of the jail itself, it's an 850 to 900-bed facility. But again, we're planning, much like your conversation about traffic, we're planning for that next 20 to 30 years on what is that staff or that facility to look like. I guess the one thing that I would bring up in this setting and let you know is that you could build a 2,000-bed facility, and if the processes and the systems that are around that are not effective, that's not going to be enough either. And so we need to not just work on the facility itself, but those, and those are some conversations that we're currently having with those stakeholders. But as you look at the different things, this is coincides exactly with what the CFAC report suggested. Were there any of those topics or, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that before, that, any questions that you might have about that?
If I may, Madam Chair. So I apologize if I didn't look at these slides ahead of time. These violate all protocols for PowerPoint, as to how many bullets you put per slide. But so I'm having a hard time reading all the nuances here. What I'm really specifically interested in, it's probably on there, Sallyport reception area, booking area, meeting, contact meeting rooms, you know, not only for council meetings, but evaluation meetings. Are they, I mean, to me, that was the main emphasis for initial work on remodeling. Is that in here?
Absolutely. We all recognize that that initial triage area is critically important for everything, the entire operations. And so as, and again, this is just a general visa, the needs and discussions. That is, I think, in the top, looks like number six is actually Sallyport and intake area redesign. And again, it's really, it's really small. You all have toured it many times or that you've been in there, and you've, you've heard the conversations about the ineffective methods on what that's working on. As we get to the stakeholder conversations and some of the other engineering conversations about best practices nationally and regionally, that's where, Councilor, you'll be able to start hearing and seeing some of those priorities in what, what's going to be best for not just, you know, our jail, but our community in having folks be able to come and go and having the right resources for that little bit of extra space for, as you said, meetings and counseling and programs and so forth.
So the contact, additional contact rooms, because we heard a lot of that and about law and justice, and not only for probation services and, you know, just the need to have available space. We heard from the lawyers, well, all these things hang up the court processes, so it should be a real high priority.
It's a high priority, yes, with all those pieces. And the violation of PowerPoint that you call out with the, all the bullet points, this is from the RFP. So this has been out since March, and so public's been able to see that. This is just a, you know, a really a cut and paste of what the power, what the RFP had, because it's really important what we put out to the, to bid is this is what we're looking for from the, the architecture and engineering firm that we're going to, that we, we selected, is all these components. It's technology, it's meeting spaces, it's how do we build courts in the bottom potentially so we don't have to transport across the street to our old courthouse facility. There's all those components that are built in. It is a lot of the information, as Dave said, taken from CFAC, as far as there's a lot of good collaborative work that went into the conversation about the amount of beds that are needed, and we've compared to various jurisdictions that are, that are like us. But as we look forward, that's kind of what, figuring out any way, the mental health component is highly important. That was talked about in the selection that we made with this, the vendor that we're going to be going with. So those are all points that are high up on the list, Councilor Mevige.
And this, correct me if I'm wrong, but this part of the review is actually developing the actual scope of work for the remodel construction and new build. So this is just that review to get that scope of work, which that detail will be included.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and the refresher on all of this. So I noticed number one here is the inmates, 850 to 900. So with, is it intended that with the remodel that we'd be able to meet that? I know because there are a number of beds, but because of how you have to manage people, we can't meet that. So I'm just wondering if the remodel gets us to that 850, 900, or somewhere less than that given management.
Do you want to take that, Dave?
Yeah, so as you build a facility, and we just want to be a wop-toe down in Monoma County, right, we have to slowly incrementally add staffing to manage these kinds of folks or the inmates that we're going to have. Again, this plan, I believe, is set for 30 years. It's how you effectively use a system, which is going to help us to get to whatever number we need to be at. So again, are we going to start off at 900 when the door is open? No, I don't see that. I see us growing into that facility using the system and building and refreshing what we need to do here in Clark County to make it a smooth flowing in and out. But I think that that growth into that 900 is not immediate, but it will be sequentially as we move through a few years, yes.
Okay. Your point, Councilor Marshall, the remodel presentation that we saw from the vendor that we're, we would like, that we hope to be going with, they will get us to that number. So with the HPOD, with the remodel of our current facility, with potentially if they say that building a tower, you know, conjunction with what our old facility is, the number that they're shooting for is that, and that work center is included in there. So all the components are to get us to that 850. So it is adding beds on to get us to that number.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and I agree with the incremental flow and, and really there's multiple factors within the whole system, as you mentioned, that will play into this. So it may be we, we need to meet that 900, maybe we don't need that 900, maybe we need a lot more. So I think weighing all those factors is important as we move forward and adaptively managing.
I think the, I think the very last bullet on this presentation is a way of growth in the future so that this isn't stuck and then all of a sudden we can't do anything with it. It's what's that next step if we needed to in 25 or 30 years or whatever that period is, is where does that growth come from next? And so again, that's an ask of the company as they build the architectural designs to figure out how do we grow for the future so we're not stuck.
And I think what else, we, when we talked to the, to the company, what we were looking at is flexibility. We learned through, I think when anybody was here during CFAC, it was very, there's a lot of conversation about direct supervision. What we need to build the facility for is to be able to let the professionals on the inside decide whether it needs to be indirect or direct in any given area that they have. It may be direct in mental health, it may be indirect in some other areas. So that was the flexibility that we need to build in to be able to adjust the needs of the facility, because we know this facility is going to be in place for a long, many years to come and be able to adjust with the changing tides. And COVID really taught us a lot of those components that we're looking at.
Chair? Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Just one really quick comment. First of all, thank you for being up here every month. It's very helpful to be able to stay on top of this. One thing I wanted to say that I really appreciate is how this has been structured, that we are, our RFP and this contract is to get us plans to be able to build, and then we still have the ability to go out for bid on the construction itself. I think that creates a much more competitive environment and helps save some tax dollars. So I appreciate that setup.
And if you can move to the last slide.
Let me take this one. Okay, so the last slide that we have here, and this is something that we're working with the company on, is the stakeholder list. So we wanted to bring this up, and this is something we'll also be mentioning, not in, not in this detail at the city council meeting that I'll be attending next week, but these are the areas that we've broken out to have folks involved in the planning process. So the company that we're, we're looking at going with, it's about a 12 to 18-month process of planning and looking at programming and looking at every one of these components and stakeholder lists that we've identified with the folks that are on those. And there's about five to seven people per group that you see here. So it is a lot of meetings that we're going to be taking place, and the company will be leading these groups with this. So we have it broken out in a couple of areas that I just want to call attention to. So the in custody housing, the inmate programs, that's a lot of our, the inmate programs are some of our reentry components that interface with the jail. Of course, you have the mental health that's called out specifically. Orientation is also has to do with reentry, medical, and then to your point, Councilor Mevige, the intake and booking, there's a whole other, there's best practices we can learn there to make that more like what Dave said, a triage area, to be able to have folks come in and out quickly. We have the visitor, visitation and arraignment area, so that's also a conversation we've had with public defenders, the PA's office from both city and county, as well as the courts of what can we do there to make, you know, use of technology with video booths, more, more of those smaller courtrooms that we can have folks transported downstairs from, so the access. So the jail operations group, the services, of course, interfacing with, Dave mentioned, with our work center, where all of those pieces are done for the juvenile and for the main jail. And then on the right side, we have our probation and pre-trial, which is done by district court, so that group will, will continue to be district court, and then the pre-trial and probation. Jail maintenance, so Michelle Schuster's group, talking about how we maintain the facility and how that interfaces with, with our facilities group. The sheriff administration, so that's called out there because we wanted to give Sheriff Horch and his team the ability to weigh in about what their needs are going to be centrally. And what I mean by that, campus security, is there a place that we have campus deputies that are, and are located near the jail or the civil process. So that's to give his group the ability to weigh in because they'll be displaced once the remodel starts to go play, go through. And then the community partners, homeless communities, so how that lifeline, so we're in detox, community resources. And then the second group, or the group right below that, is the public at large. So we have so many groups that have asked to be part of this conversation. I know we've talked to with Ms. Ann Donley and a couple of folks that are out in the public that are going to be on this group, and we have a couple of spots that we'll be advertising for, for the general, for groups that we would like. The chief from agencies using the jail, and then superior courts. then Superior Court. So these are all the, these are all the stakeholder conversation. So these are all the groups that will be giving feedback of what this jail would look like in our, in our community. The last thing I want to mention, I know this is a lot on this slide, is the steering committee. And that is the voting body that will be, and of course, it will always come back to council. But the steering committee has two seats left on it. And I was talking to Kathleen, and I think it needs to be given to council to be able to have two seats on the steering committee to be able to vote these processes for. Because this is the input coming in, the steering committee, which has myself, Kathleen, facilities, all the jail leadership, you know, potentially having council be on that as well as the steering committee before it comes back to council as a whole. So that would be something I would put out today for conversation. I know that's a lot in that slide, but I wanted to get that, the conversations we've had with our, the company that we've been talking with about what the stakeholder groups will look like as far as giving input.
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
They may be in here, but I'm wondering about the small cities that rely on the jail services.
So the chief from the agencies using the jail, so that's every city that we have in the community, and we interface, Dave goes to the LEC meeting as well where we interface. We can, if we would like to add, you know, any other folks that are, that need to be on, but the chiefs that interface with the jail are part of that conversation.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Amber. You mentioned that this is a very comprehensive slide. Also, it's a very comprehensive process. And I imagine how you're going to bring it together. How would a meeting go? Let's say that you've got five to seven people per group. Is each group meeting individually? Or how does it work?
Great question, Chair. So the company, or the agency that we're looking at going with, they, this is part of their process. So they would be running the meeting, they would be collecting the information, and they keep the groups at five to seven because anything passed that gets a little unmanageable. So in their expertise, they said that we need to pick our groups, and this is the information. So they'll be running those meetings, and they'll be setting up those meetings after we get the contract signed. So we're going to hit the ground running. And then they would be, we'd be collecting the data from there about what the planning looks like.
So let's say that the inmate programs and the jail administration have their groups that are selected. Are those two groups going to meet together?
Individually.
Or do they need...
Separate.
Individually. So all of these groups will meet individually, and then how is it coalesced? Is that just through the steering committee or what?
Correct. So all the information that's gathered through these stakeholder groups will then, if any decision points need to be made, like say, for example, intake and booking, say, we want this screening capability to do, you know, anything coming into our facility with fentanyl or any of those different things, then based on the expertise of the company, architecture engineer, their feedback of how we can implement that, then the ultimate decision would come through the steering committee to be able to move forward in that design.
That is a super important role for the inputs not to be lost and to really be heard. So good luck with that. That's a big, big effort there.
I'm reliving my times at Multnomah County when we built the courthouse with all of the stakeholders that we had at the table, with the county and the state and the DA's office and the sheriff's office. So I'm going to be relying on my expertise from that time of my life when I served on that before we built the new courthouse.
Glad that's in your back.
Chair, if I may.
Someone else wish to speak? Was that Council Young?
Yes. Yes, it was. So I'm, along these same lines, is there a way that we can have kind of a two-way communication back and forth? Because these are, I think it's critical that we have all these different stakeholder groups, because brainstorming, there are things that, I mean, I don't care how good you are, what you do, there are things you're going to miss. And it's important to have those separate sets of eyes on it. One of the things that I'm curious about, and this kind of comes about and relates to the HOSSAP that we just went through the process, as this information is suggested or brought forward from these groups, how can the groups be ensured that it's been seen, heard, and what the response is to it? Because some, I mean, not, we're not going to be able to incorporate every single recommendation. Sometimes there are going to be competing interests and things like that. But how do we at least make sure that they know that it's been seen, it's been documented, and what they intend to, or how we intend to use that information?
Great question, Council Young. So during the process, we will document it as we're going. So let's just use, for example, you know, say the sheriff's administration, I don't want to use that one as an example, say the public at large has a conversation that they want to implement in. Well, it may compete with the mental health housing, right? So as the company is gathering all that information, they're putting that programming up to say, okay, this group said this, but we can't do this with the design, or this doesn't work with safety and security. So there's going to be that give and take. But that's why, as I said to Chair Bowerman, the steering committee is so important about who's the components on that, because, one, they're the ultimate decider of what is going to go into the jail. And that's why jail leadership and facilities and all those components that practically make the jail, that's the practical leadership of the jail, that we need to make that work on a daily basis. But that'll be collected as we're going along. And then, of course, it goes through the steering committee. So, I mean, we can build in a mechanism where, you know, the steering committee can give an update, you know, we can talk about that as we, once we sign the contract and how it looks from an implementation standpoint of how we can get that information out. But it's a funnel. The steering committee is your ultimate decider about what goes in the facility, and then we come forward with the report.
Great. It's complicated.
It is.
But I think it's important, I really appreciate people that are willing to volunteer their time to make things better. And it can often be felt like, well, gee, you know, we suggested this, but nothing ever happened of it. And often, that's not the case. It's just, it couldn't be implemented for whatever reason or another. And just that feedback would be helpful so that they feel appreciated for what they have given to the process.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Chair? I have just to follow up on that. I would agree with that, that it'd be important to see where those points of conflict are and what the trade-offs would be as we move forward. And then what is the expected completion of the consultant's work? When do we expect that to be done?
So the architecture and engineers, their programming portion, and you'll have this broken out in the staff report, and you can see this in the contract when it comes forward. The programming takes twelve to eighteen months. So all the conversations that we're having, they're saying that portion takes twelve to eighteen months, which you can imagine with all the groups, looking at how we're planning, look at how the build is going and taking all that feedback, and then the stacking and ranking of importance and what we need to look at the facility. So that takes that time. And then the other part is really, they come right on top of that. Their phase one overlaps with their phase two. And then that's really the price to build and what that looks like, or price to remodel, and all those components. And I think that was roughly a year as well to do those pieces. So it's going to be a lengthy process. But the, to get this right with the programming, that their timeline is twelve to eighteen months, just to get everything captured with the pricing, yeah.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
And you may have, you may have already stated it, so if you did, my apologies. Where does the finance team fit in this? Because I know with the last group CFAC study, there was a lot of discussion, but then some of the financials is what caused a pause. So where are they at in this process? And how, especially, I would say the whole finance team, but the treasurer's office, because they have alternative funding options that we can review.
So I would recommend, we have another spot, we have a spot on the steering committee. I would recommend a member from the finance team just being, just, you know, or we can create a separate subgroup, or we can do updates monthly and go through that process. So I think I'm wanting to leave that up to you, Kathleen, to decide kind of what you, what you want on that. But we can, we can fold them into a decider like we have with the public safety sales tax, or we can fold them in as a group. So whatever you, they won't be necessarily an interfacing with the, with the agency that we're choosing, but I think if we have it built into the process, wherever you would like.
I want to make sure that, you know, while we appreciate and value the feedback that all these groups are going to give, if something is hugely expensive.
Exactly.
That we're not giving a false impression that we are moving or not moving, and that process is ongoing.
Yes.
So we're not surprised at the end and say it doesn't work.
Exactly.
Well, thank you for the update. Do you have other questions, Counselors? At least for today, knowing that there will be many, many, many in the future. So thank you, David Shook and Amber, for being here with us and giving us the latest. And we wish you well in this very complicated and complex process.
Thank you, Chair.
Keep us informed. We know you will. And now let's turn to new business, Lackamas Lake update.
So this is a follow-on also from an email I sent to Council on June 24th with the update and the history for Lackamas Lake and the county's part in that, I guess. And so this is a follow-up. I know Councilor Mevige had raised some questions, so Jeff Schnabel and Ken Leader are here to discuss what's going on and next steps.
Right? How we doing? There it is. All right. Thanks, Kathleen. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Counselors. Jeff Schnabel with Public Works Clean Water Division. And as noted, here today to talk a little bit about updates on some of the work that's going on in Lackamas Watershed around the lake and the watershed. That last update that Kathleen mentioned in late June, about the 24th or so, I'll recap just a couple of items off of that just to orient you all back to where we're at, and then give you some updates that we've heard of and are working on since that time. So first off, excuse me, the first thing we're watching closely out in Lackamas is the ecology's process to develop a water cleanup plan out there in the watershed. That's focused on the watershed itself, not so much on the lake or its management. And I think everyone's aware that that process has been a little protracted, a little delayed. And we learned early this year that the new deadline, or the new target date, I guess, maybe not deadline, target date for their technical report is the end of 2023. So that is still the status as we know it. We hope to see that report come out near the end of this year, to be followed hopefully in early 2024 by the beginnings of the actual, you know, plan development by ecology. So we're looking forward to participating in that as soon as, as soon as that rolls forward. The second major effort that's going on out there is the City of Camas working on a lake management plan for, actually, all three of the lakes, Lackamas Round and Fallen Leaf. And these were in the update as well. But on May 30th, there was a small group technical session to talk about some of the thoughts that the consultants have on that process. I was, had an opportunity to be part of that group, so that was a nice work session. And then there was a larger stakeholder group meeting in the middle of June on the 15th that involved, again, staff from a lot of agencies and stakeholder groups to kind of have a work session, a work party to work on some of the ideas that were being put forth. Since then now, newer news, July 12th, the city held an open house there at the Lackamas Lodge. You probably saw the article in the Post Record detailing that meeting a little bit. Well-attended, from what I hear. I didn't make it to that one, but I think they had about a hundred members of the public there. So that was great to see the enthusiasm there. As far as future schedule, we have not received a draft, a review draft of the actual plan from the consultant or the city yet, expecting to see that at some point when the plan is finalized. It'll go to ecology, because there were some grant monies involved in funding that work, to go to ecology for approval, and of course, the city council will take a look at it as well. We did learn that the city has received another $500,000 or so in grant funding to continue pursuing work on the lake, lakes plural. So we'll be interested to see how that, how that rolls out and what parts of their plan can be kind of early implemented as they move forward. So we will be part of those discussions. That brings me to probably the most recent new thing that is, I think, just came across your all radars maybe last week, and that is the Lackamas Symposium. This is an event that is sponsored by our Clean Water Commission. They're getting some help from City of Camas and from the Lackamas Watershed Council to develop this symposium. Last week, I believe, was when the Save the Date flyer came out for that work. I think October 25th is the date that they're looking at for that event. Primarily, the Clean Water Commission is working on developing that and the materials for that, the speakers and all of that. Public Works staff were providing some quality control on some of the materials, the flyers, the letters, to make sure those are up to kind of county standard and publication standards like that. So you will see some of those things rolling out, first being that Save the Date. We are getting close, or they are getting close, to having a finalized flyer with an agenda, as well as some invitation letters, one version of which will come to this body, and another version will go to some of the other public stakeholders that they hope to have attending. So one thing I will mention for them right now, just because we're here, within that invitation to council to attend that event, there is going to be a request for one of the council to have a speaking role at that forum, likely part of the introductory remarks. They'd like to have Mayor Hogan, as well as one of the council, kind of give some lead-in remarks before the, before the event starts or as the event starts. So hopefully, one or more of you all will be able to attend, and one of you would be able to provide that speaking role. So we'll look forward to learning more about that. Speakers that are on presentations already, I think we have NOAA, National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration will be there talking. Ecology will be presenting. The Lackamas Watershed Council will have some information, and a few others. Watershed Alliance, I think, is also on the list at this point. So should be a good event. And kind of following on from that really quick, the Clean Water Commission is also working right now on a little bit of a belated work session request for this year, but we will get that out here shortly. And hopefully, we'll be able to meet with you and the Clean Water Commission prior to that October symposium. And they would like to, you know, come in and talk about their 2022 annual report, a little late, but have that discussion with you, and also talk about what they've been working on in 2023, including some more information on the symposium and some details on that. So looking forward to that. I'll be at the Clean Water Commission meeting tonight. We have a few details to iron out as far as what that work session will look like and what that request will be. So, but be aware that that's upcoming. I think that's about all I have unless others have to add. Any questions I can help with?
So I mainly have comments, but mix in with some questions. Thanks for the update. Where to start? So the public, and it's in my district, the public is clamoring for something to actually happen. And, you know, the lake's been studied before decades ago, and pretty much the same findings keep coming out. We hope that there is a lake management plan. But people want action. And you mentioned the open house that occurred. Yeah, it was well-attended. And I can tell you, you know, social networking afterwards absolutely lambasted it, saying it was, it was like an open house at a school where you walk in and look at poster board. There was no actual discussion of anything, no question and answer, no public comments. The public was completely, at least the input I received, was completely disenfranchised. It was just a dog and pony show with, with no substance. So we need to avoid that. People are looking for action. Some of the issues that have popped up recently that have spoken, probably, I think you were on board with Dr. Melnick, you know, it's not listed right now as a beach, so it doesn't get frequent testing. It gets tested when someone physically sees an algae bloom, and that's the only time. But then the signage doesn't necessarily go out. People are ignoring it. People are in the lake, whether it's water skiing or swimming. I hear discussion of people and pets getting sick. I don't have any, I talked to one person that said they were very gravely sick as a result of an algae bloom. to one person that said they were very gravely sick as a result of an algae bloom toxic event. But there's no real documentation of that. So, you know, I'm concerned about the testing, that we're not doing it regularly. I'm concerned about the lack of signage that goes up or it goes up late. I'm concerned about there's no real public education, if you will, of people still going in the lake. With the Lake Vancouver studies and what we're still getting kind of piecemeal out of the city, and the study that's still not done on the watershed, you know, I'm hearing about local treatments, chemical treatments. In speaking with a consultant about Lackamas directly, they were anxious to see what the soil sediment testing results were, to know whether or not chemical testing or aeration or other remedial actions would actually be effective. And I haven't seen the outcome of that. It hasn't been well-published, what the city's consultant came up with on those soil samples. But even the possible actions that were promoted by that consultant, and certainly our consultant Herrera in Lake Vancouver, are the possibilities of localized chemical treatment, aluminum is one. And we're having algae blooms right now, and we're having 80-degree temperature, and people are in the water. So I'm wondering, and the impetus to actually do something, you know, I know there's this great inertia to want to do everything right, and that you have to study it year after year after year after year. But what can we do now? Do we have money available to do local treatment? Can we convince Camas to do it? What about our stormwater responsibility, stormwater runoff permits? You know, you have that failed biofilter. And it's a ridiculous argument for the city to make that, oh, it's just a small pollution source, so let's not do anything with it. But it dumps into the water, which dumps into ultimately the Waschugle River, which is in the county, which is part of our watershed that dumps into the Columbia. We have some role in leveraging our stormwater permit responsibilities to say to Camas, do something. This is low-hanging fruit. Fix it. I mean, there are actions that no one is taking, no one has ever taken, and we just keep studying. So you can tell, in our prior discussions, I want to do something, whether it's putting some nano bubbles in there or some short-term impacts on knocking down the algae bloom so people can safely swim and do stand-up paddleboards, which is ever-popular, but they do some to end up in the water at different points. You know, what can we do? And I'm happy to participate in the symposium, and I'm hoping to have some kind of one-on-one ahead of time, so we can go over on what's going to be presented. Because I know the public is clamoring for something to actually be positively done, to make it a healthy and safe place for their children to swim.
Well, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, go ahead if you'd like to add.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a few comments and maybe some questions, too. Thanks very much for this presentation. It's a complicated lake, and there's multiple jurisdictions, and figuring out what we do as for our responsibility and doing it to our utmost is really important. And then as we can figure out what we should be advocating for for other jurisdictions so that they can meet their responsibilities to the best of their ability. I attended that public meeting in July, and it was, it was too small of a venue for the number of people who were there. And there wasn't an overall presentation that everyone could care, and it was just poster boards and whoever could get in front of an individual consultant. So it could have been done better. There was a lot of information there, but there is high interest in the lake. And so I guess what I'm interested in is really understanding what the county's role is, because I think it's more of a watershed approach to things. And I think that can be frustrating, because it can be, you know, a death of a thousand cuts. But you have to address all of those, you have to put a Band-Aid on all of those cuts if you want to cure the patient. So that's what I'd like to best understand, and what the specific water quality limiting factors are that need to be addressed. And then the other thing I would just mention, as far as a role, I think that would be very positive. I think that forum that the commission is organizing could be an important education, public awareness role that we can play going forward, not just in this sub-basin, but all of them. So again, I was hoping to attend the gathering in October, but I'll leave it to councillor Mebage to make the comments.
So I was hoping, I actually was asking some questions there, and I know you wanted to respond. And Ken, you brought up during that, when we finally did get all the stakeholders together, you'd brought up the ability for phosphorus, in particular, to kind of amp that county effort up. So I left that off my list, but I'm interested in what, if anything, we've done since that last meeting in that regard.
Got it. All right. Ken Leder, Public Works Director. Thank you, councillor Mebage. Regarding the phosphorus question, so Lackamas Lake and the basin there, the watershed actually has a restriction in our stormwater manual and in our code that is enforceable, that requires any kind of treatment that's associated with new development or with our road projects to require phosphorus treatment for the water quality. So that's in place. And what I think I had mentioned to you during the larger meeting was our ability to at least check the infrastructure that is in place and make sure that those filters are being well-maintained. And that's something that our inspectors do regularly. But I don't have a specific report on the basin for you today.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Ken. And you're right, both of you councillors, there's a lot there. And so we probably have more there than we can really cover today. But looking forward to further conversations with you all on that. Councillor Mebage, on the phosphorus issue, we did talk about that, and it did also come up in the draft management plan from Herrera on the Vancouver Lake side of this. And so one thing that we are immediately doing, and had actually begun before, is for our Stormwater Capital Program, which largely deals with retrofits to the older parts of the system. A lot of those are in the Salmon Creek Basin, and so those are leading into Vancouver Lake eventually. And so on those projects that we're building currently and future, we're incorporating those phosphorus control BMPs that are specifically removing phosphorus, which is typically the limiting factor there that we need to try to get a handle on to control those algae blooms, whether it's Vancouver Lake or Lackamas. So we'll certainly be doing the same type of thing in the Lackamas watershed as we are moving in there with a little bit more aggressive planning for projects. I think as these plans get, you know, finalized among ecology and Camas, there will probably be some grant money available in those areas, kind of funneled toward those areas because of the TMDL, the water cleanup plan. So we're looking forward to those things, and those are immediate things. We also have some money set aside in our capital plan for property acquisition with legacy lands and parks. We leverage money with those groups often to purchase properties. And so there's a Lackamas lower sub-area that we're earmarking some of our dollars to kind of help with purchases of high-quality land or restorable land in that lower watershed. So those are things that are kind of ongoing, as well as our overall stormwater programming that we do throughout the county, and that also happens in Lackamas. So maintenance and inspection of facilities, things like that.
Would you use those lands for regional stormwater facility, or how do you see using those lands that you would acquire?
Not so much regional facilities, but typically, if we can preserve some areas that are already functioning as wetlands or whatever, and, you know, and take benefit from those natural processes, that's great. And sometimes there's some degraded areas that if we end up owning those, then we can, you know, look for grant monies or work on those to restore them or at least rehabilitate them to some extent, right?
That's a great question that brought up. If you have a specific answer, I'm sorry, if you have a specific answer on, you know, that overall biofilter in the Lackamas Meadows, there were some conservation efforts going on by different entities, but also our legacy lands. And we had contiguous parcels that we were looking at to expand that conserved area that is a natural watershed biofilter for Lackamas Lake. Do we know the status of all those conservation efforts that are?
I don't offhand, but we can certainly check in with Legacy and figure out those.
Well, thanks for all of that, and look forward to the symposium and further conversations that dig into the detail and any specific remedies we can have during the precious few months we have of warm water before they drain the lake and all recreation stops again.
Did you say the date of the symposium? Did I miss that?
It's October 25th.
Okay.
The date, yeah.
Great.
If councillors wanting to go, please let Krista know, because if we have more than three, we just have to notice that on the weekly calendar. And then I did, Jeff, did I hear that a councillor is invited to do some opening remarks? So do you want to decide now if, one, you want to do it, and two, if so, who?
I think we should.
I have to do that.
Let's assume that there will be three or more also.
Yeah, I think that would be fine to have Gary take that role. But I definitely, I think we should notice it, because I, I mean, that's quite a ways in the future, but I definitely would plan on attending it if possible.
Okay, we'll just put it on there just to be safe. And then, so I'm hearing everybody's support of councillor Mebage doing the opening remarks for the council.
Yes.
Just as long as he's nice.
Yeah, maybe we need to review the remarks before they go.
Well, I'll have staff prepare the remarks. You know, all these issues are the same at Lackamas as a Vancouver, as far as all the entities that have underlapping and overlapping jurisdictions and the need for a lake management plan with those stakeholders all working and rowing in the same direction. So.
I just have one last quick question. Councillor Mebage mentioned that people were swimming, and there's a blue-green algae outbreak. And I know that's not specifically your department to notice that. But has that been a problem? That people are still using, that it hasn't been noticed, and people are using the lake? There's contact?
Yeah, you know, the notices that go up around the lake, that's kind of channeled through public health and parks, right? So public health does collect, as councillor Mebage mentioned, the samples that are collected as far as algae and toxins. That happens when there is evidence of a bloom or when there is a complaint that comes in, and so they go out and sample. And then that information comes back from the laboratory, and they notice out to other county groups to make sure that the signs go up with warnings or advisories to stay out of the water. I can't comment on whether that's being followed. I know those notices do go up when we do see those numbers go up. And beyond that, I think, you know, we could chat some more with the folks at Public Health about, you know, the rest of their work out there.
Yeah, and I think there's also a news release, a press release that also goes out with the information.
That's.
I can personally tell you, knowing that when a press release went out and driving by there, people are still in the lake.
Right. Well, just for the public's benefit out there, they should stay out of the water when there's a blue-green algae outbreak, because it's highly toxic, and they need to keep their pets away as well, because deaths are involved.
By way of follow-up, let's communicate with public health and make sure that the notices are big and clear to stay out of that water, because that is not good if you're still seeing them out there. Do you do that, Kathleen? To communicate with public health?
I, yes, I can. I thought you were asking if I went into the water.
Oh!
I was like, no. But yes, and also I know public health works with the City of Camas as well to get the signs up. So we'll make sure that they're in an area that's visible. And like I said, it does hit the papers. It does do a news release. But I'll just double back with Public Health.
Thank you. And stay out of the water, please. Okay, well, I think we have finished up with that part of the agenda, 3.1 on Lackamas Lake update. Thank you all for the information, and we do need that follow-up for sure that we've talked about. So it is 11:34. We have two items remaining that may take a bit of time. One is the I-5 bridge letter, and one is the executive session. Do you wish, council, to go ahead with both of those items right now, persevere, and get done? What is your wish? How many would like to go ahead and get done?
I'd like to proceed until the witching hour of noon.
I'd like to go ahead as well.
Okay, we're doing it. So the I-5 bridge letter. I don't know who is supposed to introduce this, so I'll just make a few comments, because we've heard quite a bit about this letter already in our discussions. One is, we note in the letter, from having read it, it does a very good job of making grant requests. It also does a good job of talking about the equity lens with which the county goes forward in working with things pertaining to the bridge. We also talked about, and this is not addressed in the letter, excuse me, reducing congestion on the I-5 bridge. The light rail extension being addressed as something that we don't really want to see, and that's omitted from the letter. We want to see no tolls highlighted, and that is not mentioned in the letter. And we want to see a height restriction as an indication that we have a problem in moving forward until that is resolved. And then there's all the issues that we had discussed earlier, which I think is frankly the place to start on the, the whole point about having the third corridor tied in with this letter as a way to request public grants, especially federal grants. So I don't know, is anybody kind of designated to kick this discussion off? Kathleen?
Yes. So this letter was sent to us from the Clark County Transportation Alliance through identity Clark County. So this is their form letter that they're asking other members of that alliance to join and send. They did give me the okay to turn it in later than what their deadline was, because they did put some buffer in there. So this has not been edited at all. This was just their template. And so based on council's discussion, if you want to add items that the chair just stated, we can put that in there. And then what I would do, if there's other edits, is ask council to give the chair the okay for, because we don't meet again, to incorporate the edits that the council decides, and then we can send that out and the council supports, because we're not going to be able to bring it back for another round before it needs to be sent, if you want to send the letter. So is there any other feedback or things you want to see in the letter, or are you just not interested in sending? I guess that's one option.
Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind. I think that as this is a grant, if this is intended to be a support letter for a grant request, I don't know exactly what the total of the grant is. But a suggestion would be, it may be that the council, the majority of the council wants to make a lot of changes to this. to this, but I just would be cautious that if we want it to be a support letter and that we would not want it to undermine support for the grant. So that's just my only cautionary note, that if we can't be supportive of this grant, then we should not send a letter or we should communicate in some other way. But I would just be cautious about undermining any support for this grant because it's just been a delicate process to get it to this point. All of the funding components are, I think, somewhat uncertain. This is a large chunk of the funding that will enable the bridge to go forward, and that's really a critically important thing to be sure that we are able to replace the bridge. So I would just, I would just want to be supportive of the, of the grant and not, not undermine support for the grant and anything we might want to add. And if we want to add additional things or if we're not supportive of the grant, we should communicate that in another way.
Do you see councillor Marshall, the letter that is before you, as being supportive?
I, I do. And we don't have the privilege of actually, we don't have the privilege of actually seeing what is included in the grant itself, and I don't know, I haven't followed as closely as others, the, the status of the preferred option or where things are at with all of the various components. But I, I would, I would support this, this letter, I guess, as, as is.
Councillor, councillors, I should say, we had extensive discussion in the earlier agenda item on the third corridor being included in this letter since what we were really asking for was public funds to support that effort. Is there anything on that line that you wish to discuss?
Chair, I have a, I have a comment. Has the grant application already gone out? What's the, or is this supposed to, is, is the point of this letter to go with the grant application?
I have no idea. Do you know, Kathleen?
No, but I'm going to quickly research it, so hopefully I'll find out.
Okay. Because I think that councillor Marshall had a good point. If the grant application has already gone out and we as a council have our own opinion about the IBR with specific elements, maybe it would be just good to just leave it be so that it wouldn't jeopardize us getting the grant that would help us look at a third corridor option. That's, that's it from me.
And maybe ICC will go? Don't know. Since they initiated this process. Councillor Medveji, were you wanting to speak?
I was, yes, please.
Go ahead, please.
So I, I think councillor Marshall's point is well taken. With our past resolutions, past agreement to speak up on certain issues surrounding the bridge replacement, this letter conflicts with our prior positions. I, I do not support signing on to this letter. You know, if we were to take the time, I don't know that we'll ever get agreement on what a, a replacement letter would look like. Yeah, I would like to put in to the secretary of transportation, hey, give us some funding for planning for a third quarter, we need that as much. Yeah, give us some money to replace the bridge. But the problem with the IBR is there's so much, it's the CRC revisited. All they've done is changed the narrative. They're right back to light rail, they're right back to adding all these bells and whistles, additional costs, as we heard from one commenter this morning. I hadn't even heard that there was a plan to add additional train cars and part of this price tag. I mean, this, this project needs adult supervision and I would, I definitely would advocate for the federal government to step up and say, hey, tail, cut it back, comply with the Coast Guard's requirements, cut it back. Put light rail as a separate grant request, not only for planning but for building, maybe part of a different corridor. I think there's so much that should be done differently from what the IBR ultimately is doing that I don't support the IBR. I support the replacement of the bridge. I think it's a needed construction project. It is, it's life limited as a capital project. It needs to be replaced, not just continually repaired. But what they've had it blown up into is exactly what failed the last go-round. Alls they're doing is changing the narrative, and that's really unfortunate. So as, as to councillor Belcot's comments, you know, this, it takes us a long time to even get a, dedicate a month on a resolution to wordsmith. I don't know that we'll ever get agreement on what needs to be said to the, to the Transportation Secretary, but this letter isn't it.
And if I can, I do get clarification of, this would go with the grant application.
Ah, so there is an application that has been developed.
Yes, this would be with the application if it got approved.
Wonder what it asked for and how much?
That's a good point, Chair. That's right there, you hit the nail on the head. And why don't we know that information?
The intent, their intent, I believe it was in the email that I sent council, was to pursue $3 billion to keep the tolls low. That was the intent of the, or the amount for the grant, and I think that was in the email that I forwarded to council.
So my point, ultimate point would be, if, if we put in all the caveats, I think it would detract from being a letter of support. So I, at this point, I don't see a way forward with this letter on the short timeline that we've been given.
Let me ask this question. If the timeline could be moved, depending on when the grant deadline is, is this something that you would want to consider and bring back next week if there's an option?
Chair, I have a, I have a comment as being on the toll committee. Most of the, the people and stakeholders on the toll committee don't even agree with tolls. That's why we're, and, and the governor in Oregon has put a halt to tolling, so this, to me, doesn't even make sense, giving us money for something that, I mean, there's a possibility it still might not even happen. So this, to me, doesn't even make sense at all, personally.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if I said it earlier, but the intent of this is to pursue the $3 billion to keep the tolls low. So that, that is one of the main purposes.
So I would be in favor of trying. I mean, I would like to communicate. I, I did shake the hand of the secretary when he was here and talk to him about some of our other needs, primarily focused on railroad but also the I-5. I, yeah, but our interest is so much different than, than what the IBR is, and I want it to be consistent with our prior resolutions. So we, I would like to make an attempt at maybe getting a letter that we could support, and then we'd have to make the decision whether it's value-added, just to submit it with a grant. It's worth the effort.
I would concur with that. Would take us a week, we could make a decision and go forward, yea or nay.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Couple things on this. Appreciate the conversation that we've had. First of all, for transparency purposes, I'm curious exactly how this got on the agenda and, you know, my time that I had allotted to study and prepare for this meeting, this document wasn't even uploaded, so I'm.
And I think I mentioned that to most of the councils during my 101, that it would be sent. So it was sent to us by Identity Clark County for council's consideration. So anytime we get asked for a letter of support, unless, if it's specific, a lot of times it's really good if council's doing it, sometimes it can go through my office, we bring it to the council for your consideration.
Okay.
And, and I will own that it was late getting posted, and I think I put that in my email to you all and also on the, online. So I had the staff put the date, so that is my fault that it was not posted timely.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'd rather have it come forward than be ignored just because it's late. So thank you.
So, and then just my, my two cents worth on this. My thoughts are that the IBR is very far from perfect. I think there's a lot of stuff mingled into this thing that are political in nature. That being said, this is a transportation project that is dictated completely by politics, unfortunately. That's just the situation we're in. And, you know, I think that a third bridge, a third crossing of some sort is critical to our, our region here, and given the, the makeup of the politics, I don't see that ever being possible without the I-5 bridge being replaced. And that is where the bulk of my support comes in for the project itself, is that we will never get anywhere until that bridge is replaced. I think that is just fact of the matter. I don't think anybody would argue that. That being said, you know, a letter like this, it, it creates a predicament, and that's why I say appreciate this conversation, because there are things in there that we don't really necessarily want to support, or there are things that are missing that we want to support. And however, I think that if this is, if this, and that's why I'd be interested in more information, this is not quite enough for me, but if this is going to reduce the burden on tolling, this is something that I would want to support. And I do agree with councillor Marshall's comments that if we start putting things in there that are contradictory, that we might as well not send it because it doesn't make sense to do that. So, that being said, I, I think that I, as frustrating as it is to me, I would, I would prefer to support it in the language that it currently is in, but I'm welcome to hearing some of the other ideas that go into this, but it could create a process where we may not be able to get through it because it's a very contentious, tough issue. So those are my thoughts.
I believe we had two who were interested in revising the letter, bringing it back in a week, and two who said, let's send it as is. I believe that is correct, and that was councillor Marshall and Young. Do I have that right, two, two so far? And Michelle Belcot, I don't have you down either way yet.
I don't support that letter.
Okay, so that, well, that actually makes it a three, two. So with that, Kathleen, could we revise this letter?
So, yeah, so councillor Belcot, are you supportive of editing the letter and revisiting it next week?
No, I don't. I just think there's too many things that are wrong with it, being on all the transportation committees, so, no.
Okay, so I.
What I'm hearing are two, two in favor of modifying, two as is, and one, not at all.
Right.
So we don't have three.
Correct. So nothing will be done with it? No action? Thank you.
So nothing will be done with this letter? Let me ask a question of council. Do you think it's important to make any statement at all to the secretary from the county?
Yes.
I would say no related to the grant. I'm still worried about jeopardizing funding. I think that it's important for this project to move forward and to keep tolls as low as possible.
Chair, could we?
Yes.
How about we just submit a copy of one of our previous letters that is on our webpage that's dedicated to tolls of what we do need?
And maybe even a couple of the resolutions that we've passed?
I'm just brainstorming.
Yeah, I hear ya. Well, one of the things that the letter that is before us did was to highlight, nothing, pardon me, substantive, but that which was pointing to equity efforts that would be made. And we know that that is something that is very important at the federal level, and maybe that is a good way to go. If we were to write a letter at all, or support the ICC letter, what do you think? Because at least then, we're stepping out to say something, but not, as you were pointing out, councillor Marshall, jeopardizing any of the content of the future grant or what we'd like to see done.
Right, so if I understand, so you would just highlight the equity work or?
Much like is here now. Yeah. Or dislike what is here now, actually. It's referred to several times.
Well, I guess then I would, if, there could be a letter then that could be revised that I could support. I mean, it remains to be seen if somebody wants to take a stab at that, that could, that would be supportive of the grant. I would, it's worth taking a stab.
That was very clever, Chair. I think you've got three votes. And I, I am going to be optimistic, though, that we actually can coalesce on what we want to say in it.
Yeah, as you can see, why don't we give it a stab? That didn't come out quite right. Let's, let's work on it and see if we can do something.
Thank you, Chair, for your persistence.
So Kathleen, shall we meet on this and, and get a good draft together soon?
Yes, I can, I can take this and get initial one and send it out to you guys so that we, but do not reply all, only send it to me if you have suggested edits, and then we will incorporate them and talk about it and discuss and deliberate next week during council time.
So I'm sorry you're getting settled with this personally. When does our policy advisor?
The 21st.
21st.
And what did you say about replying all?
Yes, I'm going to be sending a draft letter to all of councillors before next week so that you can provide individual feedback to me, but what I'm asking is that you don't reply to all your other councillors, you don't deliberate, so that we can have that discussion next Wednesday. So that was simply just a kind reminder.
Gotcha. Okay, I think we have done as well with this as we're going to today. So let's look down to councillor reports. Are there any for today?
Chair, yes, I do have one.
Go ahead, councillor.
This, I guess, could kind of blend with policy issues too, but, and I meant to bring this up yesterday, but I forgot. There were some comments about being able to park yesterday that I do think need to be addressed. I don't know how we can do that. Can we raise the maximum parking time in the garage? And what can we do to better, I mean, or should we even consider, what would the, the revenue loss be if we opened up a few parking spaces there that were for public specifically for attending meetings that weren't?
I'm not sure how we would manage that. The city does enforce, but we do get the revenue for the garage, yeah, it's to pay for the garage. So, but yeah, that's a city enforcement, so I, I understand, and, but I, I can't write, I'm not comfortable right now recommending that we do it that way because then how, how do we apply that equitable? Because a lot of people come here for appointments or have meetings or, you know, other commissions, they can park on the street. Everywhere you park around here, you're going to have to pay, and there's a time limit, so.
I, I mean, I would love to see if we can put our heads together to come up with something because the last thing I think that we should be doing is creating any barriers to participation, and it seems like that is. and it seems like that is, I, that, I heard those comments last night, but there was also somebody that I had actually met, I think, in the parking, it was either in the parking garage or in here, I'm not sure where, where she had brought that up, where she wasn't sure if she was going to go back out to a ticket, you know? So I think it's something that we, we need to discuss and figure out a, some, some form of solution, some way that we can tweak it to make it work for people.
Is there, yeah, shorter, shorter meetings would be one, but is there ability for us to give parking passes or...
Again, that, I mean, yes, we can do that, but how are we going to apply that equitably? Because the public parking spots is for the public, and so how do we manage that, you know, and not tell somebody's coming in for a permit appointment that, yeah, unless you're recommending, we don't have any charges to public parking. And they also pay for, I just got a message that they pay for the court as well, people who are like in, I believe, on jury duty, and they might get reimbursed from the sphere court. But, yeah, people who are attending are also parking in those spots and paying for them as well, and could be here for a lengthy time.
And talking about the barriers, Counselor Young, a lot of the court processes we put in place is hybrid, so that people can attend remotely instead of having to come down. So we already do that with council meetings, so I would just throw that out there too, is that we do have a, I know that parking is always a pain, but we did that with the courts as well, to be able to have a hybrid if possible. So I know that doesn't solve the in-person piece, but that is an option, and so that we're not requiring people to come down.
Could, could I possibly kind of get maybe just a quick rundown on, I, from my understanding, we still are paying on a bond for the, the parking structure itself, is that correct?
Yes, there is an agreement that we have with all employees and unions and guilds, yes, and that money goes towards that.
I'd be interested in finding out what the revenue is in terms of, well, I don't know, that would be, I don't know, it was a messy situation. I don't know.
I, I think this is a good discussion for, other than now. I mean, the whole goal is to have shorter meetings, and that would relieve the need for parking. But can we, maybe you could do this inquiry some other time?
I guess I would just ask you, is the majority of the council wanting us to do research on this and bring something back to council? I'm not sure if this is a policy decision, but I'm open to the discussion.
Love to have my fee lowered, because I pay monthly and rarely have the opportunity to use it. And that is certainly not the point here. So I'm not interested in that discussion.
I would support some further discussion about this.
I need to hear from Counselor Mavigi or Counselor Belkot.
Negative.
Negative as well.
Okay, any other counselor reports?
Just, Chair, quick clarification, doesn't it only require two requesting counselors to bring something to an agenda?
No. Three, plus the chair, or two, two plus the chair works, but the chair is not supportive. So, sorry. So other counselor reports for today? Work session requests?
There is one this morning from Community Planning, and it's actually Commission on Aging Readiness Plan. I believe this is the one that was approved in the 2020, during the 2022 budget process in November 2021, where they actually proposed an amendment to have some funding set aside for this plan update. So this is one hour request in September to brief the council on the plan prior to a public hearing at the end of, end of September. And this plan provides a roadmap for actions the county, cities, and community partners can take to improve the livability of our community for older adults.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Not hearing any no's, so, sounds good.
Policy issues?
Okay, I've got a few, and Amber will do a few. The freight rail dependent use, it is with legal, they're supposed to be finishing up their portion this week, so then they and Oliver's group will be joining us back on the three areas of next steps for council's discussion. The wineries and rural events center, there will be a work session request next week for this. This is talking about the task force and who would be on that, and this is per council's direction, just to make sure we're capturing what works and what council needs are. And then once we get that finalized, the press release will go out for that. The noise ordinance, April continues to work with the sheriff's office. This will be included in the biennial update. It was supposed to go to DEB in the August meeting, but DEB canceled their August meeting. And so now it'll go to DEB in September, and we're looking at October for a work session for that to come back. And then the development notice code, this is the 300 to 500, 500 to 1,000, and also including a minimum number of residents. That's also going to be included in the biennial code update. And then I'll hand it over to Amber for some further updates.
I just have a few quick updates on my list of things that I have ongoing. So Camp Monahville, the advisory group meets at the end of August, so that is beginning. In conjunction with that, we have ongoing conversations regarding the firing range with the jail, the sheriff's office, the training center at North, who's coming down to start the academy, as well as the FBI. So we have four groups that we're working with to get MOUs in place for the shooting range up at Camp Monahville. So that's ongoing discussion, but I just want to keep council in the loop on that. The agriculture commission, so as I've been looking at the different groups, lands, various different commissions, and see how they intersect, so I'll be bringing that back to council for discussion with some dialogue regarding the intersects with the agriculture commission with the other commissions. Public defense, so it's been a little bit since I've talked about that. We are finishing the financial team review this week. Mark Gasonway and I are meeting on Friday to finish those, that, and that will be coming back to council, hopefully mid-August for consideration and the financial review. The rural broadband, so those meetings are continuing to go on, ongoing with those, with our broadband efforts. So we are going to be looking at doing a public interface on the website to show kind of where the project is, the information that we've collected from the community, and kind of where that timeline is with the state, with the feds, and all the, the flow of money that's going to be coming to the community. We've had lots of emails from folks asking kind of the timeline, so we're going to try to put that in one place on our website so that people can see that. The last thing I have is the fencing and camping ordinance. So the camping ordinance is still illegal, so hoping to get that soon, and then we can bring that back. And then the fencing is also with the finance team for the last financial review, and then we'll bring that back to council for consideration.
Which way we move that, Amber?
I'm hoping the fencing, the fencing I'm hoping will come through in the next week or so, so hopefully mid-August. I'm not sure on legal's review with the ordinance. I'm hoping that's soon, but that's kind of a parallel that's happening.
And, and as to that, I was hoping to have it on Law and Justice, and maybe if we don't get the legal opinion back, maybe that needs to be discussed at Law and Justice. I've had it for how long now?
They actually haven't had it for that long.
They haven't?
No. It was recently sent to legal, so this wasn't their hangup, and finance team isn't done with their review, as well as what Amber just shared.
The, I would just, we'll just add to that real quick, Counselor Mavigi. Legal's been on our team the whole time, but they haven't seen the final product the last month, yeah.
Good morning, Council. This is Leslie Lopez. Just letting you know that, yes, our office does have it. We've had it for about a week and a half, and so we intend to get that done within the next week or so.
Are there other policy issues? That's a lot already.
Chair, just not to beat a dead horse, and, and it's very clear I don't have support, so I withdraw my request for discussing the whole parking thing. However, I would like to have a discussion, I mean, our Rules and Procedures, Section 7E, say that it only requires two counselors to bring an item to an agenda, and that it is to be brought to the chair or the county manager, not for approval, but just to be added. That's my understanding of our rules and procedures.
And it's, and it's not to be added, so, sorry.
No, and what I'm saying is that the chair doesn't have authority to say no to it when there are two counselors that have brought it forward.
That is, I'm sorry, not the way I read it. If we want to read it differently some other time, we certainly can, but that isn't the way I read it, so. And it is beating a dead horse, sorry to say.
Sorry, I vehemently disagree with that. This is, this is an issue that needs to be ironed out?
So, and I'll be clear, my ask of council was, is there support to have staff look into things that was not about an agenda item for next week?
Well, it was to bring it forward for discussion.
My, my request of council was, is there, does the council support having staff do the research and look into it? It was not about adding it to the, an agenda item.
Okay, I still would like to have this clarified by, at least our legal team, because for me to bring an item forward to a meeting for discussion, if I involve three counselors, I'm violating the OPMA.
An open meeting like this?
Yeah, if I, if I am going to two separate counselors saying I would like to add something to the agenda...
That's not what the Rules and Procedures say. It doesn't say you go to two other counselors.
Right, it says you go to one.
You know, maybe we can sit down...
I'll let, I'll let council decide what we're going to do moving forward. This isn't...
Maybe we can talk about this some other time. It certainly is not relevant now, in that we need to get two executive sessions so we can get through the agenda, given that it is 12:09. So...
And Chair, just really quick before we depart, this, it's not really policy, but it does talk about like Board of Health is scheduling. But Public Health is asking if we can cancel the Board of Health for August. And then the second item, just looking ahead for our agendas, the week of Labor Day, would council like to take that week off?
I would say yes and yes.
I think I'm on vacation, I think I'm on that vacation that week anyway, so I think I'm not going to be available, and I'm happy to cancel the Board of Health unless there's something emerging.
Okay, and of course, if anything urgent comes up, I'll be in contact, and if we need to schedule a special meeting. Do I have a third counselor that's supportive of not having Board of Health? Okay. And the week of Labor Day? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We move to executive session, and this is a 15-minute executive session estimated to be. Is there any after action, Leslie?
No, there's no after.
And this is in concurrence with 42.30, .110, 1A2. And with that in mind, this meeting is moved into executive session, and I will see you back at 12:30 in this website, okay? We have a forum. Thank you very much. This is Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. Your Clark County Council has completed its two initial work sessions. It's council time, and we just went into executive session, completed that, and have moved back into council time for the purpose of adjournment. So with that, and there being no further action called for, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.